Good evening and welcome to the Jefferson County Mission Meeting. Tonight is Thursday, April 2023. We're going to start off with prayer for Mr. Johnson. Do you want me to stand or sit there, wherever you like, sir?
I invite you to join me in prayer. Holy God, we thank you for the opportunity to have this body meet this evening, and we ask for your blessing upon the meeting. Give our leaders clarity, vision, and a clear understanding of the issues before them. Help them to do what's best as they serve our community. We'll lift this meeting up to you. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Good evening. Good statement for the pledge. I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, what we issue under and to this law with liberty and justice for all. Pardon what minutes? March 2nd, 2023 budget deliberations?
Just a point of clarity on that. I think it was the amended March 2nd meeting minutes that were in the package.
Yes, ma'am.
Correct. And can I just make a recommendation?
Sure.
Is when we amend the minutes and we bring them back for a vote or whatever. Can we just mark them as amended minutes so we're clear? And perhaps page numbers so we can refer to any issues? Thank you.
All right. Any other comments? Okay. There are no objections to March 2nd budget deliberation minutes approved. March 9, 2023 budget deliberation, same thing. We just update those. No objections, that is true. March 24, 2023 budget deliberations, any objections? None. That is approved. March 22, 2023 draft, end of budget hearing, any objections? That's approved. March 6, 2023 greater reading, are there any objections?
Pardon me?
Yes, ma'am.
April 6?
Yes, yes.
Okay. I did have a question. On the last page of that minutes, the packet of minutes, it says, under interim county administrator reports, it says, the third point down, continuation of increased pay rates. It talked about a two-to-two vote, those voting for and those opposing. It does not mention that Commissioner Haff was not present here today early that day. And I just think for clarification, we need to remember that Commissioner Haff had to remove that.
What is that?
Yeah, I have a couple.
Okay.
One minute. Let me... So this is right after we did the presentation from Angie Banks. There was the motion by Ms. Taff to approve the hire of Sherri Best. And all the details of the hire just doesn't list what position she was hired. Let me just make... I think that might be it. Thank you.
All right. That's it. All right. Any other changes that need to be made with the minutes? Here none. There's no further objections. April 6, 2023 minutes approved. Approval accounts payable from April 13, 2023 amount of $13,450 is excessive. There are no objections, that is approved. Accounts payable for April 20, 2023 for a amount of $756,644.60. If there are no objections, that is approved. Perpetual manual checks for April 14, 2023 amount of $653,753.96. There are no objections, that is approved. On April 21, 2023 for a amount of $137,103.06. If there are no objections, that is approved. For approval of requisitions for April 20, 2023, amount of $34,930.80. If there are no objections, that is approved. Perpetual payroll for April 14, 2023, amount of $280,530.48. If there are no objections, that is approved. Do we have any answers?
We can remove this number six.
All right. All right. And we'll move on to public comment. We have a few people signed up. First one is John Christensen. You have three minutes.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is John Christensen. I'm the president of the Eastern Panhandle Central Labor Council. We represent seven counties and over 2,000 employees in the Eastern Panhandle. I'm talking about Workers Memorial Day today. It's next week, April 28th, where we observe all the workers that have fallen the previous year. More than 50 years ago, on April 28th, the Occupational Safety and Health Act went into effect, promising every worker the fundamental right to a safe job. The law was won because of the tireless efforts of the labor movement, demanding action from the government to protect working people. Yet despite progress in occupational safety, thousands of workers are killed and millions more suffer injury and illness each year. They die crushed in trench collapses, trapped in machinery by explosions. They die from infections. Others are killed in falls, vehicle incidents, heat stress, or victims of workplace violence. On average, over 100 workers are killed every week in the United States due to traumatic injuries suffered at work. More than 20 times as many die from occupational diseases, many due to exposure to hazardous substances many years before they die. These do not have to happen. Many are preventable. In 2021, West Virginia had 36 fatalities and 12,600 injuries reported in the private sector. Just recently, a young West Virginia state forestry worker was killed fighting a forest fire. Cody Mullins of Mount Hope was only 28 years old. We honor and remember Cody and all these men and women on April 28th, Workers Memorial Day. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Mark. Mark?
Shame on you commissioners and those who agree with you. You've got a lot of nerve daring to infringe and abridge my First Amendment right to express my opinion and exercise my right of freedom of religion by having the law bust me down for praying while black just because it's different than you and what you believe. It makes you all racist, religious bigots and hypocrites. This isn't living up to the oath you swore to uphold in the Constitution. By the way, how's this religion crap working out for you? With the mess you're making in the county's finances and administration? Still forever running things by starting crap on social media? Having people quit left and right because of your crap? Churn, churn, churn. No wonder no one lasts very long in their jobs. They're doing well at them. No one wants to keep working for you because you make it hard for them and you won't work with them. Or you don't want to serve the public like elected officials are supposed to do in a democracy. You all need to keep from sticking your nose on the wrong side of everybody's business and start minding your own.
Are you doing any public comments, sir?
No, I got three minutes.
Are you commenting?
Yes, I am commenting on protesting your activities.
You can leave, sir. Thank you. This is public comment, not votes.
Well, let me repeat myself. Shame on you commissioners and those who agree with you. You have a lot of nerve daring to infringe and abridge my First Amendment right to express my opinion and exercise my right of freedom of religion by having the law bust me down for praying while black just because it's different than you makes you racist, religious, bigots and hypocrites. This isn't living up to the oath you swore to uphold in the Constitution. By the way, how's this religion crap working out for you? With the mess you're making in the county's finances and administration? Still running and forever running things by starting crap on social media? Having people quit left and right because of your crap? Churn, churn, churn. No wonder no one lasts very long in their jobs. They're doing well at them. No one wants to keep working for you because you make it hard for them and you won't work with them. They want to serve the public like elected officials are supposed to in a democracy. You all need to keep from sticking your nose on the wrong side of everybody's business and start minding your own.
And next we have Ms. Tina.
Good evening, everyone. Now, if you tell everybody... I should have been on the agenda, but I forgot all about it. So I'm just going to throw something out there and then hopefully I'll be on the agenda for the next time. Then maybe we can discuss this matter. I have two things that I'd like to bring up this evening. First is, do we have any type of acknowledgement for someone that is like 15 years or 20 years or 25 years? Is there something for that? If you can get back with me on that at another time. I have one getting ready to go 15 years. So I'd like to know if there's anything I can do for that person. And the second thing I'd like to bring up is, I would like to start and ask for volunteers as well to create a company-wide employee picnic. And I would like to do it like in July or late July or the first of August before the kids go back to school. I think every county employee deserves a hamburger and a hot dog and a time to be together and get to meet each other. We see each other on the streets and passing and stuff, but I think it would be a great way to share some appreciation for everything that they are doing for us. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next is Mr. Big Tam.
Big Tam, lifelong resident, taxpayer, has fallen comments. At this time, I'm just waiting for the state auditor to respond to my request. I wonder what I asked for this thing? The public should be getting ready to pay and prepare to pay for the increase on property taxes coming August. How's that going to work out? Presentation for JCSA Supplies and Equipment. They want for February $31,224.62. From March, $48,356.23. Has anyone been checking to see what they were buying? This time, somebody put it all on there. It's a pile. So there's computers, there's holders, there's tags. It's all over the place. There's some medical stuff. There even appears to look like there's 20 computers when you only have eight ambulances. So are we giving out computers now to everybody? That purchase alone was over $13,000. It must be really good ones. So I understand this is arpen money, but some accountability should be in place. This money is not free. Unfinished business, presentation eight, Parks and Rec, Health Insurance Benefit Plan. There is no request and there's no information. House of One, new agenda? Old Business, number nine. Again, there is no request and there's no information. County Administrator has four different... The first three, there's nothing there. The hospitality request for transportation somewhere. There's a little bit of paperwork. $1,500 for 40 people. They must have a heck of a meal. So if you haven't noticed, my rendition tonight is a little shorter. I'm starting to see a little cooperation. With cooperation comes respect. If there's no cooperation, there will be no respect. I've been getting a lot of calls through Trump. They all have a nice...
Next is Ms. Jerry Wines.
I'm Jerry Wines from Marcus Ferry. I'm here tonight concerning our EMS coverage here in our county. Monday evening should have been a high opener for all of you county commissioners, the bad accident that was on 3/4. All the units were there except for one. So Loudoun County and Berkeley County had to come in and cover our county and run calls for us. It makes you wonder how long did those time for them to come to our county and cover? How long did it take? Residents are worried and concerned about our county's EMS coverage. Just look at this area. It's growing each day. There's communities being built all over the county and only having just a certain number of EMT ambulances in our county, we need more. So they're really concerned about are those couple ambulances going to be able to cover our whole county? Each one of you on this board can make that change. You were voted in and are supposed to be here for our county. So why don't you let the people see and hear that you, the county commissioners, made this change? Make a change to help put EMS units not in the Blue Ridge Mountain area in Midway and add more EMS coverage to our wonderful county. This is all you. You can do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please, sir, public comment. We move on to agenda number one, Ms. Nikki Tang.
Good evening, my first. So last year, when we applied for the Hava grant for the equal books that you all did approve for the upcoming budget, we were denied those Hava funds because they were more focused on trying to get the counties that have not updated their election equipment updated. There are currently only, I think, three counties left in the state. So they opened the Hava grant up again, so we're going to try again. And that Hava grant can cover up to 80% or 85%, I'm sorry, of the total cost. So instead of a cost to the county of $98,200, we would only have a cost of $14,730. So I just need your permission to apply for that Hava grant, and then I will need your signatures.
I'm going to approve the Hava grant application.
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Most carries, pass your...
Started here. All commissioners have to sign that one. And this matters a lot. It doesn't count. And this one is just for the president. There's another one coming around now.
So did you say that there are three counties that haven't switched to electronic? Is that what you meant?
So the equipment that we have is the hybrid. It has the paper trail that the voter can actually see. So my understanding is that there are three counties that still just do the touch screen, the Ivotronics. So their goal was to get the entire state usually from that equipment.
Yeah. I really appreciate having a paper trail.
Yes.
Thank you.
You know, not one that a voter can have in their EMT. Yeah.
I think that is just for the presentation.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you. And next we're going to move to agenda number two, Rebecca Hall, Prosecutors' Office.
So I have the federal program grant that needs to be signed for the fiscal year 2022 to 2023. The application is on the agenda, but it's not been sent out yet. I was hoping I would have it before this meeting. It's not yet been sent, so I just have the contract to be signed.
Okay, so you see a motion for the 2023 contract.
The federal vote grant.
Fair, okay. I'll move to approve the 2023 contract. Oh, please, a second. But we'll sign it. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and then I marked off it.
Thanks, Anna.
Two more.
I'm sure there may be some bad...
Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am. All right. Oh, you want your pen?
Oh, yeah. The blue pen.
All right. Next, we're going to move to agenda number three. Judge Tan, Development Authority. Presenting tonight is Gina Siska.
I'd love to tell you that I have all the paperwork available at the office, and I do not have the executive director's resume.
Okay.
I know you guys have a copy of it, but I don't have it with me. If you want to table it, or not table it, but move it till later in the evening, if you'd like to do that, then I can come back with all the paperwork.
The only thing we need is the name. Salary.
I don't have any information, and I'd like to see that.
So what do we do?
I mean, I can run right over again.
Yeah.
Probably I'm going to copy.
Can we move that? So can we move that to a little bit later? I think you have an opportunity to get all that.
I thought it said Sean...
Sean has resigned from the Development Authority. Not only as president, I'm the vice president, so I'm the president right now. Yeah, so he resigned, I believe, on Monday. So Sean is no longer in position. So in the meantime, you'll have to deal with me, unfortunately.
If I just didn't, I didn't know.
Yeah, I hate to be unprepared. Pretty embarrassed by this, but I got caught up at my office for a while and took off out the door and totally left everything on my desk. So we'll get it done.
All right. So we're going to skip to jump to four. We'll come back to three. Mike's time?
So just a little update. We're still moving right along operationally. We're functioning every day. Units are running up and down the street. We're covering calls. You're going to hear lots of stories. Some, a lot more to some of it than there appears. We're really in the eye. It's public where we're not in the past. My guys are well settled. You know, the transition was a non-event for them. Units are, we've had adequate number of units in service every day. No shortages of units as far as being staffed. No huge amount of breakdowns that causes to have any shortage of units. We do struggle, I mean, at times, to cover all calls, but that's nothing new. We are responsible for not only doing the EMS in this county, but we support the fire and rescue services as well. And there is an increased demand for that. It's just a shortage of personnel. It's nationwide. Everyone's having trouble. And the more we have to support the fireside and rescue side of the operations makes it more difficult for us to maintain our full staff and complement of ambulances on the street at any given time. So in the past, we've always relied, this county's always relied on mutual aid. We've seen them. We've used them. That's personal. Every agency around uses those. So, yeah, we had a major accident last week. Several, two of our units, the crews were tied up on fire engine and a rescue squad because there was an extrication involved. So there were critical units that needed to be there to perform that task. So we did rely on Loudoun County for some backfill. That's their purpose. And at times, we do reciprocate. Shepherdstown goes to Washington County, and we go to Frederick County from time to time. So that's something that happens. I continue to monitor calls. I get reports weekly from ECC, checking out response times, turnout times. There's, the numbers look as good as they can. I mean, we're getting decent responses to all areas with the placement. You're going to have areas of this county directly that we just cannot get 10-minute response time. I mean, if you live in Cable Town, you live at the end of Mission Road, Baker and Engle Moller area. I mean, these areas are just not going to be covered in the time that everyone would like. I'd love to have a fire station everywhere. You know, it takes a lot more people. And like Ms. Wine said, people are key in not just getting them to fill the positions, but having the budgeted positions. We are behind the eight ball. We've been for a long time. My guys do the best with the least is kind of our motto, unfortunately. They make good decisions and get the units where they need to be in the quickest amount of time. There are times where they have to go to the office for supplies, meetings, training, other things. They're out of place. That happens. That's nothing on regular. So there may be times where a unit isn't where it's expected to be. So it takes a little longer. But they're normally in their stations and doing a good job. So everything seems to be working. We've received some of our striker equipment recently that we got the request for a few months ago. So that stuff's arriving in large chunks. So we're about two-thirds away through acquiring all that and getting that installed. All the units are functioning, been serviced, lettered. We're still working on the licensing. It's kind of a background thing. We are certified, licensed. We have the bill, billing is set up and functioning in the name of the ESA, so that's happening. The other, getting it in the county name is happening in the background parallel. So as we get that straightened out, a lot of issues with federally with IRS. So you're changing, you change your federal identification number. So trying to reach someone with the IRS and talk to someone in person is very difficult to make sure that, because there's a lot of time involved in this. So we want to make sure we're doing it right this time so that we don't get three quarters of the way through the relicensing and find out we have to start over because we've made a clarifier. So we're working on that. I guess I'll give you an update. If you haven't heard, the board directors in the meeting Tuesday night voted to move my staffing, the units which you own, to Midway and Blue Ridge Mountain effective June 1st. With the staffing that we currently have, I'm going to have to put on the next agenda requests. We'll be asking for, they're requesting to see if we can get additional positions to make the second, the Midway truck, a 24-hour truck. So that wasn't on the agenda, so I don't think I can bring it up and put it on there tonight. But that'll become the next meeting. Currently, we do not have any lease agreements with those stations, so that is not in place. I don't know. Timeframe on getting those completed may be simpler since the original ones were all done and that format's in place. But it's caused quite a stir to my personnel that the board overruled. Maybe the interim director, but I'm the leader currently in the board overrule. What was in place and what we felt was working and functional. They have settled into their new assignments and having them doubled up in Trelstown where at the two stations where the majority of the calls happen, obviously, everyone deserves coverage and everyone gets coverage. Again, going back to the, the fact that we do fire, it makes it a much safer job for my people because more people get on the fire truck and do the job where they don't have to go out to be. So that, that is the reason why the staffing changes moved. That was part of the fit recommendation. When I came in, Bob felt it was going to work. I came in, we're evaluating it, we feel it works. Not saying they don't need ambulances other places, but if we're, we cause a shortage, we move them around, it's going to short other areas. So it's, it's trying to do the most of what we have, the safest way we can. So that's just a little update on that.
Sure. I know as part of the transition, we set, allocated some applicants to help with recruiting, retention, and the staffing issue. Do you have any numbers on where we are with recruiting?
Recruitment? Well, until I get the confirmation, a hundred percent, I'm told that the starting pay was increased for the paramedics, we need to advertise that because we've had interest, but no one's going to come here for $20 an hour because they can go to Berkeley and get 26. They can go to other areas and get much more pay and much more benefits. So we struggle with that. EMTs we can acquire. Not that it's really different, but it's, a lot of people don't want to work for big city departments, so they choose to work your close home. So a lot more training involved becoming a paramedic, a little harder, so not everybody does it, and everybody has interest in sticking people with needles or shocking them or whatever. So we, we're still struggling. We're hoping to get out the, advertise the new pay scale and get some interest. I mean, we had, we had a few applicants over the last few months that turned down the jobs purely because the money wasn't there, we couldn't offer it. So I'm hoping at least a couple of those may reconsider, and it will bring some other applicants in.
So the bump on March 1st didn't, didn't help at all?
Not really.
Okay.
No. I mean, it helps everyone, but it's not significant enough to, to make up that. It's seven and a half percent on $20, you know.
Yeah.
Get you a couple of hours. But they look, people look at the bottom line, they really look at their salary. Where we work at 2472, which is 24, work one day, you're off three days. A lot of places work at 2448, which is more demanding. Causes more overtime, basically, but it makes your salary at the end of the year bigger. So if you choose to like that schedule, that's okay. Different variations, places change it from time to time. So I'm hoping something happens there. I mean, we're using full-timers to backfill currently, so it's causing quite a bit of overtime. We've tried to use them on their short week. They have one week of the month where they only work, or one payday where they work 72 hours. So it doesn't incur overtime, so we encourage to use that. But as usual, we're making do with what we have. So any other questions?
No, I just want to say thank you. I know you have your interim director right now, and you're doing operations, and you're doing the transition.
Yeah, I'm struggling to be, one person short, and there's not enough time of the day.
I just want to say thanks.
To do all the things that I'd like to. I'd love, love that. Like I said, I know you've requested some more data. I'd love to have charts and be able to flood you with information, but it, it's not a time-of-day deal of staff who come in. I have an open-door policy, so my staff, they have issues, they come see me, and there's nobody else we're referring to see. So, yeah, I mean, we're making it happen.
Keep your staff connected and.
Right. So if there are no more questions, I guess we just move on to our reimbursements. For February, supplies, equipment, services related to the transition, $31,224.62.
I'm, I'm going to approve the $31,224.62 says for reimbursement to JCESA.
And that's for February 2023?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, excuse me. Not to nitpick, but it says on the invoice it does say 31224.68.
Okay, our agenda says 31224.68.
I have the same copy, so that's what it says. So I, I don't have the invoice with me, but if that's what Debbie submitted, then it's probably in her own. This, I was. So, yeah, you have, is that an actual copy of the invoice Debbie submitted?
Yes.
Yeah. Cindy has it as well.
Yeah, you're right, it is.
It says, okay. Okay, yeah, I'll, I'll just motion to 31,224.68.
Thank you.
All right, any, we have second. All right, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries, Nancy. Go ahead, sir.
Second request is for March 2023. Same thing, supplies, equipment, services related to the transition.
I'm going to approve the reimbursement of JCESA, the amount of $48,356.23 for March 2023. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed, motion carries, Nancy.
I would just like to comment on some of the reimbursements to ARPA that we put out, especially the labor. There's a lot of stuff that we're doing that was not going to be accomplished by what have been the contractor. These are operational tasks. We, we've got equipment, we've consolidated five supply rooms organizationally through redoing, we've moved rooms around within our station, getting the trucks outfitted. It's been a lot of time, people put a lot of time into that. So that's where this has come from. The licensing and all that is what would have been handled by that contractor. So these costs would have been incurred regardless. One other thing that I probably should add in the EMS update is still moving forward with the potential plan to acquire the Shepherdstown and the Middleway Ambulances. Working with Nathan, just ironing out the legal stuff, and hoping by the next commission meeting, we'll have that on the agenda. Let's see if we can get approval.
I thought you were in negotiations.
Yeah, yeah, we're still moving forward with that, for just all the background stuff. Yeah.
Anything else? Anything else, have you? Thank you, ma'am. All right, we're going to move back to Gina Siska. Sheriff's County Development Authority.
Sorry about that. Definitely not my plan. I'll give you all the copy of the letter of the candidates. Unanimously approved by the Executive Search Committee and also by the Development Authority Board. Name is Edwina Eddie Benitez. She has experience in development, rural development specifically in Senator Murkowski's office. She has her education, her master's degree is specifically in rural development and economic development. She's had extensive experience in, on Capitol Hill, extensive experience in, on K Street, and a lot of experience in running her own business. So currently, she does a tremendous amount of, of volunteer work in Frederick County. She is not a resident of Jefferson County, however. The only knock I could find against her. Currently, she's serving as a transition team member for the county executive in Frederick County. And she's extremely polished, definitely a professional, and is more than capable of forming this job and building all the, all the relationships and all the intergovernmental relationships that she needs to do. But also, she has tremendous, tremendous social skills and the ability to work with people across the, across the board, high-level business, high-level government, and, and she has experience doing it. And she's, her capabilities is, are quite good.
I have a couple of questions.
I want to hear, please.
The, the agenda request form was essentially blank.
It was.
No name, no hire date, no salary. I'd like to know what the salary is, and is she here this evening?
She is not. However, I can give you all of those, those things.
Okay. Mine.
Is she? I would love for her to speak, you guys would, she's super impressive.
And what is the salary?
So let's, let's go with those first before she speaks. So. Okay. Give her a chance to go out. So she was hired at $95,000, which is in line with the previous Development Authority Director. She will begin on May 1st. What was the third one? You had three.
It was the name, the start date, and salary.
Yeah, and she goes by Eddie.
And the reason those were blank, because there was a Development Authority meeting on Tuesday that had, this had to be approved first, 14 years, so it didn't make the package.
I see. Thank you.
So it was a place order.
Okay.
Yeah, and we did that specifically because we'd like to get this position filled with, with someone that we know is going to be a tremendously good fit for the role.
Is she, is she?
I messaged her to, to self-mute. She's self-muted, so.
Okay.
Well, let's hope she's, you know, tech savvy. I'm pretty sure she is.
All right, well.
But I'd like to hear questions from any of you about her. She's really dynamite. I think it's exactly right candidate. Like I said, she was unanimously approved by not only this, the Executive Search Committee, but also by the Board of the Development Authority. So in other words, there was no question that she was the top choice. And the fact that she really wanted the job and is super passionate about it, it was a big selling point for me. And for me, if you're going to take a position like this, you better want it.
Does she plan on moving into Jefferson County?
That would be a question best asked of her directly, not one I can answer, sorry.
I do believe the commission gives a little bit of money to the JCVA, and I'd really like to talk to it.
I know, I hope that she can jump in. I understand completely.
Well, it's the board's decision. I mean, we have to back it.
Don't we?
We have to back it up.
Oh, yeah.
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 I mean, the board has interviewed her extensively.
Yes, sure, I have no doubt. I just was hoping that we.
I would love to, happy for you to have an opportunity to speak with her. She's, she can definitely handle herself in public.
Great. Thank you.
What's up, Sarah? Now.
Miss, she may be trailing along back there. Typically, we're going to. Well, typically, we don't.
Eddie?
Hello, everyone.
Hi.
Hi, I am sorry not to be there tonight. I am trying to get all my kids' doctor's appointments before starting physicians, so I'm coming back right now from a kid's doctor's appointment. And also, why I didn't unmute, because I had to pull over quickly. So sorry about the, the delay on that.
No problem. Thanks for joining us. Did anybody have any questions for Edwina?
Ms., I'm sorry.
Please call me Eddie. Please call me Eddie. It makes things easy.
Thank you, Eddie. So you live in Frederick, is that correct?
I live in Jefferson, Maryland, which is, if you know Brunswick, it's right outside of Brunswick.
Yes, ma'am, I do, I do know where Brunswick is. Are you, do you have any plans to move to our wonderful county?
I would absolutely love to, but my husband works at the Naval Research Laboratory, and he drives about an hour and a half to get there, and it would add an extra half hour to his commute, so it would be two hours. So we're trying to split something that is somewhat in the middle. It's only 30 minutes for me and still an hour and a half for him.
Okay, thank you.
All right, does anybody have any questions? All right, well, go ahead and move the motion to approve the hire of Eddie Benitez for Executive Director of the Jefferson County Development Authority, the salary's $75,000.
Ninety-five?
Ninety-five. Don't say ninety-five. Oh, that's it, okay. Give me my writing, sorry. $95,000, and certainly this may first, thank you.
Second.
Any discussions?
I just am going to make a statement. I agree her resume, resume is phenomenal, and I'm sure it's recommendation of the board. And but remain consistent with my past votes. There's not been enough information in the back for me to make a yes vote on this. So I'll be voting, unfortunately, against this hire because of lack of information.
All right, any, any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries for one, thank you.
You'll like her anyways.
All right. Nathan, do you have anything that we don't have to go into? We have like 15 minutes before we start the AMUs.
No. I'm.
You're just. All right, well, maybe we, we can start a little bit earlier, maybe we'll go ahead and knock out number eight. You want to take over that?
Oh, yeah, so that was from our last meeting. We had Jennifer Myers had reached out to Millennium Insurance, our broker, about adding, not that we would cover their cost, but the Parks and Rec just being able to be part of the plan.
Be under.
Under, right, and then they would pay premiums and reimburse us. And so Commissioner Jackson had wanted to know if adding their employees would have any effect on our premium. And for Lori Brace, then there's no impact. Because there's so few of them, so no impact on our insurance. From the addition. So I don't know if we decide, if you want to make, do you need to make that decision to allow Parks and Rec to? They may not even pursue it, they just wanted to have it as an option.
Well, and once they find the cost, you know, that might.
Right.
Decision too.
Yeah.
They're currently on PEIA, so.
It might be a little cheaper, I don't know.
I don't.
I don't know the difference is. All right, since it's not any cost to us, I certainly don't have a problem with it. I'll move a motion to allow Parks and Rec staff be on the county health insurance benefit plan as long as it doesn't cost us, it's neutral. Ma'am, just one second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Is this appropriate to vote for this now if we don't know for sure? If it is, that's fine, I'm just curious.
No, we, we do know for sure.
We do. Oh, I'm sorry, I thought it was for Steve.
That there's no impact on our.
Thank you. I'm sorry. I thank you very much, I missed that. All right.
All right, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, five, zero. All right. Still having time, we'll move on to number nine, temporary compensation extension. Right, since it was a tie vote, I can put that back on, on the agenda. Discuss that. Got to pull up something here. I was, I came across our policy 212, just want to make this known. It's calculation, compensation, policy, classification, plan policy. This policy was adopted 2012, and basically it says any employee selected to fill a temporary position for another appointed worker shall receive a higher rate beginning the 10th workday of the temporary assignment if the position has salary rich. So we have a policy that supports this extension of temporary compensation for employees that have that is basically due on a job or has to do more duties.
So, if I may, we follow Robert's Rules of Order. And in Robert's Rules, it does say that when there is a tie vote, a motion requiring a majority for adoption is lost, so the tie is not a majority. So there's that. Once that vote takes place, a motion for reconsideration cannot be brought up again unless it was by those, one of those in the prevailing vote. And prevailing voters know that day. So that is right here in Robert's Rules. So I think we must follow that. We had a vote, it was, it was no, it was a tie. So I don't think we're, we're allowed to reconsider unless one of the commissioners voted, pardon me, made a motion to reconsider. One of the commissioners on the prevailing side. So that's where I'm coming from.
Well, I think, I think we've all done some research.
Yeah.
I think when there's a tie, there's no prevailing side.
That's not true. On the tie vote, a motion requiring a majority vote for adoption is lost.
No, I understand that. But what I'm saying to order the condition to make a motion to reconsider when there is a tie, it means that either side can bring it.
No, it says right here, except in committees, it can be made only by a member who voted on the prevailing side. The prevailing side that day was a no vote. So I, I'm sorry to say, I believe I'm correct. I'm not trying to ruin anybody's evening or anything, but this right here claims day in Robert's Rules.
Yeah, because I've done, I dug up the same stuff, I googled some Robert's Rules. Maybe you should. You, maybe you should rely on the legal counsel for this.
Well, but I have my.
Look out too.
That's fine, but I have it right here.
And I, I believe that, um, that Commissioner Kraus is correct. Um, if there is a motion to reconsider, it can only be made by, um, a person who was on the prevailing side, that that meaning next. Uh, you know, there's a variety of motions. There's a motion to reconsider. There's a motion to renew. Um, a renewal of a motion, uh, has to, it can't be made in the same session. And our sessions are three month periods. Um, unless, um, there's a substantially different question in the renewal motion, um, through a significant change in the wording or because of the difference in the time or circumstances. It's like the rules. So, um, so a motion to renew has to wait until the next session unless there's a substantial change, a substantially issue in the motion.
So the motion to renew can be brought forth when?
Unless it has to be, it has to wait until the next session, which in our world, our sessions are three months.
Three months, okay.
Quarterly session.
Quarterly session.
And that's just how the, but unless there's a substantially different question or a significant change in the wording, or, um, some change in the circumstances in which it's proposed. In that case, it just kind of becomes a different motion.
No, sir. I think it still must be made by someone on the prevailing side.
Not a motion to. A motion to reconsider is.
Yes.
Okay. Well, what we'll do then, um, is wait till the next quarter. And then perhaps if someone wants to bring it back for a motion to renew, we'll have to do that. Um, that's not a problem. I just wanted to bring up the fact that there's a policy that supports that. And, and it's been in policy since twenty twelve. All right.
Can I offer an alternative?
Sure.
In, maybe in light of just trying to resolve this and move forward, I would happily, you, I've already approved my increased salary to John's, the base level of a ten, right? I would like to offer up that difference for this next thirty workdays, divided by three, and I'll share it with my staff. It's no cost, budget neutral, which is.
I don't know if we're allowed to do that.
Why not?
Well, there are, there are rules, and I think that we must follow the rules here.
It's a different.
I, I think.
Alternative to kind of resolve this and that.
I appreciate that.
Where the rules.
Well, we don't have to, we could, we could make a motion to just, you know, table it indefinitely. We could do that.
There's no motion on the board to table that.
No, I mean, it's been voted on. And, and to your point, the Robert's Rules, and I was just reading, I don't know where the, I've got the reconsideration section. I don't have the renewal section.
Certainly.
Yeah, I've just copied that. But, um, yeah, I don't, I don't think we can, can make a motion with something that's not.
We just, we, we, we simply cannot. It, it says it right here in black and white. We must, we have rules that we must follow. Uh, it just is.
Well, we, we, that motion failed.
Yeah, with that motion failed, or a rule that's a policy since two thousand twelve.
Well, but we made a vote without paying any attention to a policy.
I want to point that out, that that's in our policy. And it says shall. It doesn't say you can if you choose. It says shall.
Oh, I understand about the word shall. Believe me, I do. Married to a lawyer. But um, I, I must say, we do follow Robert's Rules. We do follow parliamentary procedure here. Tie vote, motion requiring majority vote for adoption is lost. Since a tie is not a majority. And it can only be made, a motion to reconsider can only be made by a member who voted on the prevailing side. That is simply what it is. It isn't, it isn't a, you know, anything I'm saying to be mean or I'm caring or unkind. It's simply the rule. And I think that we must follow the rules.
What we, I think what we should do is, is we'll have to wait till the end of the quarter, probably put it back on, if somebody wants to put it up for a renewal, to renew. Okay. Um, Cindy, I'm going to move on to, do you want to do some of your reports till seven o'clock? Whatever you can get through.
Yeah.
Because any of you still start till seven?
Uh, for the first one, utilizing Tyler Technologies, I'm proposing that we, we already have a service contract with Tyler, and I would like to add on onboarding of the ESA employees, all the, like, their lot and none. I know we talked about wanting to, so, and I know, oh, Jackie's not here tonight, but her team has been great, she's been very gracious letting me work with her payroll folks and just kind of getting our arms around everything that is needed to onboard all the employees. And it's, it's a lot, and it's important. Like, I don't want to make any missteps with somebody's pay. And there, you know, there's all their health insurance deductions, retirement accruals. Um, it just goes on and on. You have to make sure child support payments are in there correctly. There's lots and lots of data. And we don't have a Tyler expert on our staff. You know, we were very blessed at one time to have a finance director who knew that system inside and out. Um, we just do not have that. And we're not going to have that anytime soon probably. So the proposal also includes, so all of the employee information, uh, as well as financials. Because we need to get general ledger accounts set up for what the J C E S A uses, vendor account set up, how to be, uh, you have to like program the checks to print out, the workflows. Um, there's just a lot. So I did get the quote from them for implementation. It is nineteen thousand six hundred dollars. That would include all of that. They, that's, um, and here's one could be a good thing. Um, it's billable. They did it twelve days as encouraged. So we don't use all twelve days. We don't pay for it. And there is, I talked with our, um, account manager today and asked if there was any kind of pre-work even, we, you know, if we could come up with some of this data ourselves and just provide it in the format that they need, that then maybe it wouldn't take their teams long. But we could maybe save some dollars that way. But I'm highly recommending this. I don't know otherwise how to get it worked up.
Tyler is us, meaning we take twelve days with the number of employees and so forth that you're talking about.
Correct.
Okay, twelve working days.
Twelve working days. And, you know, you want to run tests to make sure it's all working properly. I don't want to mess around with anything that has to do with employees' pay or benefits.
So, um, that proposal, can we get a copy of it and look at it?
Sure.
And review it. I, I understand the sense of urgency for this, but, um, there's no request for funds on here on the agenda. And I would just have to look at what we're getting for that nineteen six hundred dollars.
And even with, like, if we, if I called them tomorrow, it's the lead time, unfortunately, is probably forty-five days before they can even start. So October before they can do it, go live.
So do we know, so like, the ESA is on this career ladder. Is that what they're going to build out?
Mm-hmm. They'll build all salaries.
Yeah, but I mean, they're on a career ladder with, you know, tenure built in. Is that how we will, it will be built out?
We'll structure it just the same way we do the deputies.
Okay.
And that's more Jackie's team knows, like, they're, they have a good grasp on what they need. And they, you know, I'm hoping that she can, she'll let me lean on them to help communicate with Tyler as to what we need.
Well, that brings up another question. So are the deputies on a career ladder in Tyler's system right now? I guess.
Not yet. They've got to move them all to a central one.
This would be built out to where we could use it for the deputies.
And they've had that at one time. So they're familiar with that. They won't be brand new, our payroll team.
All right, so you will turn some, some stuff out for a little bit, I guess, so I can give you that.
I would appreciate that, yes.
Yeah, and you just want, I mean, I've got the contract and Tyler, you want like all the different pieces?
Yeah, just like to be able to see.
Like the general ledger account list, all that stuff.
Whatever you have, that can, that can help us make a decision. Thank you.
Okay. I don't know what the other options are.
Okay. Still want to, I mean, it's almost twenty thousand dollars. I just would like to look at.
Right. And we would, just the funding would come from our broad because this is part of the ESA transition. So, you know, so we do have the funding for it.
All right, we're at the top of the hour, so we're going to start interviews. That's good, good field, man. We've got a couple minutes. We'll come back to this interview. All right, we're going to start off with the, we have several interviews tonight. Let's see. Uh, we have interviews and findings for the, we're going to move it to the general and federal interviews and findings. Jefferson County Property Safety Organs Enforcement Agency, we have one on its prior term. We had somebody at back there. They used.
Did we have? Who applied for that?
Hey, Mr. David.
Hello, I was, I was struggling with pronouncing that name, but yes, I know who you're from. Thank you.
Is he on? Okay.
I'm sorry, is he on? I didn't.
No.
No?
No. So, uh, all right, so that was for the, um, safety ordinance, which I guess we'll skip over that for now. Um, and then the next is, uh, the Telomond Community Action Board, one, uh, three year term. It's, it's firing in March twenty twenty-six. Do we have anybody to back that one?
Yes, we have two.
Okay.
Mr. David and Ms. Deborah.
All right. David's on here. You want to come forward?
Sure.
Well, welcome. You want to tell us something about yourself?
Sure. I am the Social Services Liaison for Jefferson County. Um, I am, this is, the application was in alignment with that role to have a voice across the, the region for the continuum of care, which is Telomond. Um, we are not currently getting any funding from them, and we have questioned that over the years. And so being on the board would give us a, you know, kind of a, a very clear awareness of why that is not happening and how to remedy that, if that's possible to remedy. Um, I think it also positions Jefferson County to be, um, to have the voice that we're looking for pretty directly. That was a, I feel like that's sort of a home run, to have you sitting on that committee that , um, it, that is fully in line with what we're trying to do with this position that you pointed me to. So.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Does anybody, any questions?
I was going to say, I think she can create that. I'm the commission representative on the Telomond Board. Um, and I'm not working in the day to day of it. I think people ask that.
They, and Telomond was very, like, embarrassingly excited about it.
I'll move to approve the appointment. Jennifer.
Verdugo.
Verdugo. Make sure I get that right. I thought that I was, I was right. Telomond Community Action Board, it's a one, it's a three year term ending March twenty-sixth.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
May post, motion carries five zero. Thank you.
I've given you an update on what I've done so far, so you have that. I don't have to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have the Home Sorium Council. Do we have anybody to back for that one?
For that one, yes.
Bob Anderson.
Is Bob Anderson here? Come up, sir.
First of all, thank you for the opportunity. I'm Bobby Anderson. I've been working for the city of Ranson for a couple of years. Started off as project manager and then threw under a director of Parks and Recs at me for a year. Kind of rough. But the reason I'm interested in this is, it's like seventy hours a week. Anyway, the reason I'm interested in this goes, as project manager for City of Ranson, I have to have certain buildings demolished that possibly could be saved. Now, I don't have control over saving them. I follow the orders and set up plans to have the buildings demolished. Some of them mostly are landlord owned, so they're not tenant owned. And so that's why we have probably tried to save them. The landlords are non-responsive, and the building become a hazard, either water's turned off or whatever. There's a lot of repairs that the landlord's not willing to pay for. So they just go ahead and let it get demolished. And last year, we demolished eight. This year, I've got four right now on the books that are going to be demolished. And I'd like to save them because Ranson, among other areas, does not have affordable housing. It's hard to believe we have all these developers bringing in three to five thousand homes in the next few years, and their values start at four fifty to six hundred thousand. Nobody in Ranson can afford it. I know I can't. So most people that I know cannot afford that. I mean, I have friends who can't even afford to buy, but the rent they pay is exorbitant. Eighteen hundred dollars for a two bedroom house.
Right.
They can't even, they don't have the money for down payments. So what I want to do, and I don't know, I certainly not stand alone, I'd like to help people buy houses, stay in houses they, they are in, or find a way to get rents affordable. But we need affordable housing. And right now, Ranson doesn't have anything on the books to bring it in. We even have a new project called Boundary, which is a brownfield site that's been restored. And the developer has, is going to build ninety-six homes. Well, they're already sold to an investor. They're all going to be rentals. There's not even a chance for anyone to purchase them. So it just negates everything that, that I would like to see. And if I can get on a committee where I can make a difference, that's what I would like to do. Now, I have fifty-six years experience in construction, so I'm an old person. But I don't feel old. But I'd like to take my experience and put it toward saving buildings, to get affordable housing, or work with whatever it takes to have certain laws, regulations, process to help people. If you have any questions, I'm over.
Sounds to me like you're very interested and invested in this idea. It's a good idea.
Well, I am. I also, um, I'm involved with Amanda Stroud in another area. We've been trying to establish an angel fund. We asked for money for ARCA funds, for an angel fund, which will help families who do own homes, who can't afford to make the repairs. Also, it would involve, uh, helping those who need ADA requirements, either shower seats, grab bars, ramps to get in and out of the house, whatever it takes. So I want to implement that as well, as part of that affordable housing package. So, um, I really want to get involved. I think I can help. But it, it takes more than one. It takes a village. So.
I don't going to have very many, I don't really know exactly what the powers of the Home Consortium Council are, but at least it will help, it sounds like it will help generate.
I'm a little bit in our pocket.
Yeah.
On what, I guess, the expectations of, you know, what this position would require.
Well, I talked with Nancy Strine, and she asked me to, to apply here.
Okay. Well, the, I was going to say, the Home Consortium, they're the ones who've come before us before. I think they offer like down payment assistance and.
Nancy was here.
Nancy.
Two meetings ago.
Yeah, we offer like people who want to buy a home and don't have a down payment, they get affordable loans, you get the down payment money, and it's like, you can buy the house. That's what I want to be involved with.
Are you familiar with the program that the Auditor's Office offers in order to help with?
Well, I have a book here of a lot of things that I'm getting familiar with. I even would like to see, uh, someone provide these penalized homes, because if you have a lot, and you can't afford a four hundred thousand dollar home, you could put a penalized home up there for less than a hundred and twenty-five thousand. And that's part of the things I want to get involved with too, is to bring in other people, other vendors who could help us. Because even though we're dealing with Ryan Holmes and these other groups that are bringing in all these thousands of houses, none of them are willing to give up anything to put in an affordable house.
Right. I, I just wanted to make you aware that the Auditor's Office does have help available.
There are a lot of different agencies within agencies. And I'm, I'm aware, I've got them in my book here. So what I've been doing is accumulating information.
Okay. Well, put that on your list.
So I can just get involved with it.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Uh, I'll move to approve the appointment for Bob Anderson to the Telomond. I'm sorry, the wrong one, wrong one.
Wrong one.
Yeah. Right, right?
I'll promote with Telomond. I'm working with them too.
I need to get my glasses. Big size here. Uh, for the Home Consortium Council for a three year term ending June thirty. For the Home Consortium Council, for a three-year term ending June thirty of twenty-six.
I see.
Any discussion? All in favors, aye?
Aye.
And, thank you for the gold confidence, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I'm moving next to the Jefferson County Development Authority. Just to give you a little background of the Development Authority. Each town, we have, we're required by code to have panel reps on the board, by the four different, five different council. Town reps. And they are to send us a few names that we choose from, from those names. Who wants to go first, it's like most of Charlestown is here, right? You have the whole town here, so, how about we start with Charlestown? Who wants to go first? Is it, is?
I did our presentation last night from our previous rep, Mr. Todd Coyle, I hope he continues to serve in a different position on the JCPA, so we got some updates last night about what they've been working on. Any questions?
Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Ricketts?
Just trying to look her up, so. How many applied, and how many positions are there?
Well, they sent us names for the citizens and the town reps, they sent us three names, and we're going to choose one of the three. And that was, that would be on this letter right here, for Charlestown. We're going to take care of ours.
Why are you interested in serving on the JCPA?
Sure, so I have many years of experience in the tourism industry right here in Jefferson County, working at breweries, restaurants, retail shops. I feel that is one of the target sectors of the JCPA that I'm very familiar with. I would work to familiarize myself with the other sectors. I also have nonprofit experience, so I understand kind of the relationship between a board versus, you know, working with the staff of the JCPA. I feel like I would understand that working relationship well. And as a representative of Charlestown, I'm very active with community-wide, region-wide meetings, in addition to our own city council meetings, so I feel I come from a place of background knowledge and experience, and would be a good representative on the board.
Thank you. And the regular board meeting meets at three o'clock in the afternoon, are you able, how's your schedule?
My schedule would allow, allow that meeting.
Okay, okay. I was, sorry, I asked Jane's question, she always asks that question. Yes, yes. All right, does anybody else have any further questions? Hi, thank you, ma'am. All right, next we have either, y'all can flip a coin.
My name's Michael George, I'm the, one of the city councilmen from the city of Charlestown. I'm also mayor pro tem. Been doing this for about eight years now. I moved to the county about twenty years ago. I love living here, and I want to see it grow in a smart, efficient way.
Good deal, and the meeting's at three o'clock, no problem?
I work from home, so I've been very busy.
Does anybody else have any further questions?
I was just, actually Dan's asked this every once, it's a little late, it's the game. Are you, I shouldn't say that, I mean, I'm really not thinking clearly right now, but what do you see, why are you interested in JCPA as opposed to some other committee?
I'm interested in a lot of things, and, but JCPA is a, is a way of trying to help development move in the right, right way. The county needs a very diverse economy to be able to survive any economic hardships. If we only had one, if we only had tourism, but if tourism dries up, we're kind of the eight ball. We need light industry all the way down to tourism, a wide spectrum of things, and make sure that the county continues to grow, become a leader in the state.
Okay, thank you. Mr. George, what direction do you see the county going with respect to development?
Well, right now, we are, we are spinning, I wouldn't say spinning, but we are, it's just breakneck space, speed at housing. And everything else seems to be lagging behind, infrastructure, schools, business, everything else is lagging behind, which it does, normally it does lag, but we're moving at such a speed that it's, seems like it's never going to catch up. But it's just a matter of doing the market analysis, getting out there, getting in front of the corporations, getting in front of, you know, other development agencies, to show that we have the pool of employees and pool of customers for them to come into this area and flourish.
Does anybody else have any further questions? Thank you, Mike. All right, it's, we have Bob here. You want to tell us why you want to be on the board for today?
I'll tell you a little bit about myself first.
Do that, yes, sir.
I'm Bob Trainer, currently the mayor of Charlestown, I've been on a council for eight years, lived in the county since two thousand and two. So I'm very interested in the, in the Jefferson County Development Authority, because it's kind of a centralized entity that can holistically look at the county as far as development goes, not just kind of piecey. I think all the municipalities in the county have all great ideas, but it seems like we're kind of going in a lot of different directions. I kind of see the JCPA, as they've been doing in the past, is having a more holistic view on development in the county. I'm also a member of the Region Nine committees, so I think I can bring some value added to the Jefferson County Development.
And three, meeting, third, the second, third, do you see very long, three, three o'clock?
I think I can do that, just as long as I put it on my calendar, it's good to go.
Well, I'm sorry.
Does anybody else have any questions?
Yes, thank you. Mayor, do you, is there any, is it appropriate for an elected to get a position like this? I'm just simply asking, is there a problem with that, or is that, okay, allowable?
They're all elected, they're all councilmen. But can.
I mean, yes, yes.
Yeah, they sent us three names, it could be anybody, it could be names from the city of Charlestown.
Oh, okay.
It could be a citizen's rep, they could be, excuse me, it could be a citizen, it could be a councilman, it doesn't matter.
Okay.
Yeah, our current representative was on the city council when we.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions?
Mayor, do you feel like you have any special skills that you would be bringing to JCPA?
I looked at a couple of the subcommittees, I do have some background on finance, budgeting, and stuff like that, that I could help there. And also, I think the, there's a government liaison committee. I have some connections, obviously, with the, with the county commission, with various municipalities in the county, and statewide, I have some connections there, so I think I could maybe add some value added there.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Thank you. All right, I think to make it easy, we should probably just take care of Charlestown, and we'll move to Ranson, and Bolivar, and Rand, and then Shepherdstown. Do we nominate, in the past, I don't remember, do we nominate a name and vote on them, or do we just, those are the three names that are nominated? How does the commission prefer to proceed on this, so. All right, well, I'll tell you, how about we just go down, everybody raise your hand, or for whichever candidate. For Ms. Ricketts, can please, if you would like to see Ms. Ricketts serve on the JCPA, please raise your hand. Okay, two. All right, Michael George, one. And Bob Trainer, two. All right.
Let me get my book.
We have to break, we have to break the tie in favor of Ms. Ricketts on the board, please raise your hand. Three, and Bob, two, all right, congratulations, Ms. Ricketts. Next, we're going to move one, two, to Ranson. Is anybody here from Ranson? I didn't see anybody. They presented four names.
Four names, nobody's here.
Nobody's here.
Nobody's online? We've got some easy ones for kicker, too.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Nobody, all right. I know a couple of gentlemen on here, I mean, they don't really have to show up to, we're supposed to vote on them, so.
Well, I don't know any of them, can we, can we move on to the ones that submitted one or two?
They come back, they'll be online.
Maybe they'll be online.
All right, one is Shepherdstown, is James Gitz. He's currently on the board, I think he was the only one that was submitted.
Yeah, that's why they're done, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, they don't get a lot of people that's interested, I know James, he's served on the board, and he recently served on the hiring committee, he does a really good job, so. I would not like to nominate James Gitz as a Shepherdstown representative.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favors, aye?
Aye.
Anybody pose, motion carries. Citizens rep, we have Mr. Todd Coyle, Mr. Todd Coyle, you want to come down? If it's, we have, we have two citizens reps, right? Or one?
Just one.
Just one.
Well, I think, I think they do, I don't know how to say it, I was, I had applied for every spots.
Yeah.
It was a little confusing.
Okay, so you want to tell us, of course, as John, how about you tell, you're currently, or just tell us.
My name's Todd Coyle, I'm currently on the JCPA as the treasurer. I have been representing Charlestown, I was on town council when I was appointed to this. I would like to continue that work, but I'm not on Charlestown town council, I'm just a different guy, so. So I've grown up here, I've been here all my life, my family's been here for a couple hundred years, know these guys pretty well. And I know the community and the county pretty well. Very encouraged about, you know, the work we've done on the JCPA so far, and I would just like to continue on with what we're doing. I feel like we're getting somewhere, I'd like to be a part of that.
Does anybody else have any questions for? None, all right. Then I'd like to move the motion to appoint Mr. Todd Coyle to the citizens rep position on the JCPA.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favors, aye?
Aye.
Anybody pose, motion here, thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
All right, Bolivar? Come on up.
One more time, sorry about that. JCPA, nice for me. I am Geno Cisco, I am the administrator for the Jefferson County Health Department, longtime resident, Shepherd undergrad. I have a master's degree in public policy with a concentration in economic analysis. So economics is definitely one of my things, one of my favorite things to do. I've been on the board already for about a year and four months. Currently the vice president of the board. Was involved, obviously, with the selection of the new executive director. I can't disagree with Todd. I think we've begun to turn a corner from all the problems, and all the, I won't say problems, but all of the controversy that had occurred in the past, so we've turned the corner. We're now focused again directly on economic development, bringing in new businesses, retaining and helping current businesses in the county to sustain, to remain successful, and to become more successful moving forward, all, like I said, while at the same time recruiting new businesses in there. And that's really, I think, the beat overall. I'm quite familiar with the mission of the Development Authority, which is to retain and attract new business. This is where it gets a little fancy. And provide jobs at or above the current market rate.
Yes.
And to provide a nice tax base. So there's, there's a difference between bringing in certain businesses versus other businesses, and we should always do our best to try to bring in the businesses that, that bring in the highest pay and lay down the heaviest tax base, and that's really where the goal is, is trying to stay within the mission of the Development Authority. So I've enjoyed it, it's a fun little challenge, and I'm definitely up for the new, the new term.
Does anybody have any questions?
Oh, well, I mean, I, I have a question.
Right on.
Okay. The, as, as a parent of small, I have big kids and I have small kids. The kids pretty much take care of themselves, the small kids, they kind of need us to, to help, help them. There's not a lot in this county for parents to, to take their kids to go, you know, do for entertainment. I consistently bring up Urban Air. I'm taking my kids there, I have to drive all the way to Frederick, we spend our money in Frederick, we spend gas to get to Frederick, we come home, spend the gas, some time. I would really like to see some more family-friendly businesses coming into the county. Is that something that you guys discuss?
Absolutely.
Have any, you know, input on, because I really hate driving to Frederick for that.
I don't know what urban air is.
Oh, you know, it's fun.
Oh, well, I'm just a big child myself, so.
Yeah, well, then you'd love it.
Okay, is it some type of like tumbly place?
Well, pictures, Skyzone, do you know Skyzone?
Is that the one where you parachute over the fan?
No, but that sounds like fun, too, I love those.
You know, the skydive, indoor skydive.
Indoor skydive.
It's not that, but that sounds fun.
So it's kind of simply like a big arcade, but they have more, they have a variety of things, they have the fun bumper cars, they have the foam kits, they have things for small children, they have things for big kids. They have party space for birthdays and things like that, and I really think with all these people moving into this county, just like us, with small children, there's nothing for anybody to do here. We have to go to Winchester, we have to go to Hagerstown, we have to go to Frederick. Why? We need to start trying to attract that kind of thing here. That's all I wanted to say, what is your, what are your thoughts on that?
I could rhapsodize for an hour on that subject, I'll be honest with you. And the reason, there's, if you take a holistic look at that, to attract young people with young children, there's a lot of things that you have to have in place to attract them, and that's not the only, only thing. You also have a very good school system, you have to all have.
You have good school choice, and that's, that's perfect, too.
That would also be part of the discussion, of course, so, so, but you would have to have a really holistic discussion on that. The, um, the discussion we had recently was very similar to this, so we had, we have a lot of parents on the board, and they discussed where could they take their kids to practice basketball? They have, they have their rec league, where do they go to practice basketball? I think a lot of what the Development Authority probably haven't, hasn't done, that it should probably begin to encourage, and to provide places like this, would probably be to work a little bit more closely with the Parks and Rec Department, which is something we probably haven't done previously, and find out where they stand on how, how utilize other parks, and what, what part, what parts of the parks are being most utilized? Where can we encourage all of those types of things, and are they open at appropriate times?
They're, they're very busy.
Exactly.
They're doing great, what I'm talking about is.
Encouraging a business, okay.
That will employ young people from high school, or, you know, whatever, but we need to get more businesses into the county that, you know, parents can bring their kids to. There, there is not a movie theater, there is not a bowling alley, I always hear people mention the bowling alley, that's kind of fun. I would love an ice rink, that'd be super, right, Srida?
And that, that is all, would be definitely great.
Yeah, the great idea.
One of the, one of the things that, the mission of the, of the Development Authority is, is to bring in wages that are at or above the median wage of the county. Service jobs, I'll be honest with you, service jobs are often below the median wage.
So that's good for high schoolers, that's.
Absolutely, but again, there's a very specific mission for the Development Authority.
Well, who do I talk to? Campaigned on this, and I'm looking for this, and, you know, I don't need to go on and.
No, no, these are all great questions, no, I would love for you to come and attend a meeting and have an opportunity to discuss it with the Development Authority, especially the, the new executive director, but also the staff, so that you could get a feel for what the Development Authority is really geared towards, what its mission, what its mission is, and whether or not that mission needs to be tweaked, is something that's, it can be discussed. There is, there is a state mandate too, to the Development Authority, it's not just locally controlled, there is a state mandate also, because a lot of the funding that comes, and the loans that come to the Development Authority come through the state. So there's, there's state mandates that are required, if you, I, I'm not sure exactly which chapter it is, because I have so many different chapters in my brain, sixty-four, sixteen. 64, 16 of the state code. But the Development Authority is actually governed by a chapter in the state code. I'll be happy to have that sent to you so that you can look at it. And that way you can understand the quasi-local, quasi-state role that the Development Authority exists in, as opposed to it being specifically. Again, this is another one of those agencies that has the name Jefferson County, so-and-so. But it's also, it's a combination state, local, quasi-governmental agency, so.
One that doesn't pest on you.
Please, come on. You and I have spoken, we spoke at Charleston, in Charleston for a while and I don't have any problem speaking with you and you and I have gotten along very well and I don't think that will change anytime soon.
I would like to make a motion since Gina got grilled the most.
I know if she has a question. Not anymore.
You were very correct. Oh, our list.
They're not here to interview us.
They're not here.
They are both county, or town council members, I believe.
Yeah, I think they just.
They backed out.
Okay.
So go ahead.
I was going to make a motion for Gino Cisco to be Bolivar's appointee to the Jefferson County Development Authority.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. That covers everybody with ransom. They're waiting to hear some ransom to interview. I'm excited enough level.
I know one well and the other one, so I think I can recognize.
I don't feel comfortable voting for somebody that I don't have any information. I don't, aside from their name and address, it was provided by the mayor. I don't feel comfortable voting. There's nothing.
Well, and, you know, they, I think that, you know, they are just supposed to send us there in the towns, defense, they're just supposed to send us the name. It would be nice.
Absolutely. I was hoping they'd show up.
I know. Yes.
I mean, they're not required to show up, so. That's something, and it is, if they, in order to keep the core amount of the board that's serving fill these positions, sometimes it's hard to get one like it was last week. We were calling, we were starting five minutes after, so.
Was there any way ours? I mean, I don't want to make more work for our overworked staff. We don't have fund numbers, you know. Tell us, we've got your address.
I think that Mrs. Daryl Will is online, but it's under sharing votes, so I just reached out to them and see if that's who.
Okay.
We need to hear back.
Have to do some detective work here or ask them just to send in a short item.
It's disappointing. I mean, there are people who did come who were interested and they showed up. While we're waiting, I do have a couple of questions. If you don't mind.
Sure.
In the, I always organize my packet and I staple the related things. And in the packet that I have with respect to this JCPA board member, I'm a little confused and it says on, I think these were emails or letters to, pardon me, from Jessica to the various mayors regarding these appointments. Please be advised the term of Gino Cisco and so on and so forth expired on April 5th, 2022. Is that an error or was that, have they been without a C for the person? I mean, you've been there, correct?
I believe I should say.
2023. Okay, so there's an error.
Yes, it did expire at the beginning of this month, but it continues until a new appointment.
Yes, 2025 is what I have here. An unexpired term in April 5th, 2025. So I wondered if that was vacant for a year, but then after hearing Mr. Cisco speak, I didn't think so. So there, that confused me. Then there was another, another with respect to Shepherdstown. It was the same error. Please be advised the term of Jim Gatz, Shepherdstown appointee, so on. Expired on April 5th, 2022.
I believe that should be 2023 also.
That should be 2023 as well. Okay, well, I think it's important that we group read before we do it. And I do see, I do see Charleston's one appears to be correct for 2023. I was just curious because.
Same April 5th on that, right?
Yes, yes. Still no here. I didn't know if that seat, those seats were vacant for a year or if that was just another mistake.
I was appointed to fill a vacancy until April 5th, 2023.
Yes, sir. Okay, I appreciate that very much.
Now, did you, were they to find anybody?
No, they're not.
What's the pleasure of the group or the four names from ransom?
I think they said. Council said we prefer.
Yeah, if they want to, can they try next meeting? Can we try again?
They can be looked at.
Why don't we try that?
If we could at least maybe two to show up next meeting.
Or at least just write a statement why, like they're being nominated, why do they want to be? Why would they be interested?
Maybe we'll reach out to them and ask, yeah, maybe a written statement would be better if they didn't show up the person or calling.
I would like to, I mean, be online and let me talk to you or, you know, ask questions. I don't know. I think it's important. I think it shows.
I'm assuming they know they've been nominated.
What's that?
I'm assuming they know they've been nominated.
I would assume. I just think if you're interested, if you want to do this, come and show up and let me ask you a question or two. That's all.
All right, well, we'll move on. We'll do that. Meantime, we'll just move on to Katie Cockery. And I guess you will go into executive session for a few of these.
Actually, I don't really have anything.
Oh, nothing at all? How about that? Well, I thought you meant you exhausted everything. Yeah.
There are a couple of issues there that we're still working through, especially the operational MOU for firing us. And we are actually hashing out some issues with our insurance company to be sure that we have the language in there that they would prefer. And it takes a little bit of a turnaround to send them the issues and have them back. I'm working through a variety of documents with Mike. I'm listening to finish that issue.
Okay. All right, well, then we'll move on to back to sending for approval to advertise.
Yep, I would like to advertise for a finance director position. This is possible. Get the posting up tomorrow. What else do you want to?
And you have a salary range?
The range, what we posted last time was 84 to 96.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I was going to keep it that same.
Sorry.
Go ahead, Ms. Jackson.
What I was going to say was with our new hire coming, new county administrator coming and with her background, you did state that she does have budget experience and, you know, understands these things. I'm not certain that we need a finance director position advertised at this moment. And I think maybe it might be wise to hold off a little bit, give our new administrator a little bit to get her feet wet and see how she feels. Does she feel comfortable with this? And she may say, yeah, you know, I think that it's complicated. I prefer, you know, why don't we go ahead and advertise? And maybe she'll say, oh, I think I can do this. I don't know, but I think it's wise, that's a lot of money to spend. And I think it's wise if we just hold off.
I would disagree. I think it's much too big of a job. I know before, having a finance director and the county administrator, they're very stretched thin with the two of them.
It would be nice if our new county administrator could be a part in.
Well, because we just be advertised.
Yeah. They would absolutely be interviewing in selection.
Well, I agree that we should defer till she actually starts and let her take a look at the job description. I'm not saying we don't advertise it, but I think we should have her input on the job description. And she could maybe, if she feels comfortable, chip away at some of the things. If not, we leave it whole. But I do think we should defer until she starts before we advertise and let her have some input. Ultimately, this person's going to be reported to her. So it would be nice for her to get her feet wet and have some input on posting that job.
Well, I disagree. We have three staff members that are trying to fill positions of five different people. And we know we need help with getting our finances, the inputting in the system and so forth, especially with this ESA transition. We're going to hopefully, you know, have Tyler Technologies help in some way, but we have to get our finances in order. And I don't think, you know, an administrator could be effective until we have that piece in place. It's in order, you can't move forward unless you know where you're coming from. And we've got to get that down. And it takes an expert in Tyler Technologies to do that. That's a full-time job.
Well, Michaela has mentioned she has experience in that. I'm just, we don't know what her level of experience is.
Well, then she can oversee the finance director.
She's still a finance director. So she can, I mean, she's going to be running her county administrator job.
Yeah, county administrator is a full-time job.
I'm aware, and I'm also aware that we just submitted the budgets. Our biggest task of the year is over. I don't see a problem deferring this until she.
Well, we're not, we're not, you know, hiring anybody. You know, she goes, when does she start sending?
May 8th.
She's going to start in a couple of weeks. It doesn't cost us anything to advertise. If she feels like the job description needs to be tweaked, certainly we can do that and continue advertising. She certainly will not, she will be responsible for hiring a financial director.
I thought we were responsible for hiring a finance director.
That's the county administrator. We're only responsible for hiring the county administrator.
Oh.
Yeah.
Well, that's interesting. I didn't know that.
So, so she, if she gets here and we won't go get advertised, we're not out of anything. We're not wasting time to interview. She'll be doing the interviews and she feels like it's necessary to have a financial director. So it's really no cost to anybody for us to just move forward with the advertisement. If she gets here and says, hey, I want to do it all, she can do it all.
Not if we have already hired a finance director.
She wouldn't want to interview and hire a finance director.
What I'm suggesting is, you know, maybe she'll feel that she doesn't need a finance director.
But I agree with that. But I think what Fisher Stalper is trying to say is that we're just looking to cast out a net and get as many resumes as possible.
I'm aware, yeah.
This is just giving us, sorry, I lost my question. This is just giving us more time to get more applicants for Michaela to review as opposed to.
I think we're talking about two separate things. I know what you're saying. What I'm saying is, what if we don't need that director position?
Then I think it would still be good for Michaela to have.
She doesn't hire.
Okay, I hear you.
She won't hire. I mean, yeah, she says, I don't need it, that she won't hire. She's responsible for hiring the financial director, but she's the county administrator. She'll be the county administrator. So if she says she doesn't need it, then she would still hire that person or won't do any interviews.
Would it be nice to have names and resumes to provide her with? If she still chooses.
Thank you, okay, I hear you.
Any other, any more discussion? I'll move to, I'll move to approve just to go ahead and advertise for the financial director position.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close?
No.
Motion carries three, two. Approval or CPA firm?
So, I apologize, I just got this from them yesterday. They couldn't meet with me until yesterday morning because of taxes.
Very busy, very busy.
Yeah, so this is the CPA firm that works with Berkeley County. My proposal is to have them audit the budget that I submitted to the state. Being as I'm very candid, I don't have the finance background in county government at all. And so I would like, I think it's a good idea that somebody that is familiar with county government and also this firm works, they know Tyler, they can look at all of our data. Just make sure everything is cohesive or make recommendations on any revisions that we may want to do within the budget. You know, we've got time to still make revisions. So there's going to be healthcare costs that still need to be worked in there. Needs to be budget information loaded into Tyler, which I don't have experience in. They can do it. Billing rate, they do give a discount. They will just bill us by the hour. So there's not, it's only as much as we need, $85 to $200 an hour. And they did put a fee ceiling on there of 24, which I don't think we would need anywhere near that. But fortunately, maybe I did a good job on that budget. Do you have an estimate for what your guessing would cost if you're paying under the ceiling?
I'm hoping maybe 10 to 12, but I, you know, I don't know. It depends how much they need to look and delve into it. But I want them to review our revenues and our expenditure. I want that all just reviewed to make sure that it's.
Well, I mean, at the state auditor's office, when we submit the budget, if the budget is not going to open up, we're going to get input from the state auditor's office. They're either going to accept our budget or they're not.
So I don't know how much detail do they look at, you know, that really, are they looking at our year-to-date and what our revenue generation is really predicted to be? I don't.
But I'm just saying, I think it's a little premature to have a CPA firm audit the budget. We just submitted without the auditor's office coming.
Well, didn't you get a letter from the auditor's office?
We got the approval to lay the levy and move on from that. But there's, you know, now that there's revisions that get made, and this is normal, before the, you know, by the end of June.
Right, right.
We're looking at it, we still don't have the healthcare information back. We may need to make adjustments for that. We will, guaranteed, we will. I just thought it was a good idea, so.
I agree, and I'm a Cox holiday, I agree with maybe helping to prepare the financials. And I just don't know that we need them to do an audit of our budget.
Right.
I believe the auditor's office will let us know if something is amiss or wrong. It has to pass their muster, just like every, you know, 54 other counties in the state. I just think they'll come back and tell us, hey, something's wrong or broke lag.
That's my, my question is, will they do, will they offer us something that the auditor's office doesn't?
Well, they're not going to put the entries in the Tyler for us. It's hard, like, because all this budget information that we just submitted all needs to be loaded in. I don't have the experience to do that. Salary information needs to get entered, all the FICA changes, all the, just all of that. Revenues, the budget, the FICA.
And we don't have, we apparently do not have a financial director hired right now. So I will go as far as, don't know the total fee of this, but certainly the money that we could have right now paying it salary for a financial director, this could be, that could, you know, this could offset. It would offset.
Since here a fee ceiling of $24,000, it's possible it could go that high. I don't think we anticipate that, but it's possible. It's $200 an hour.
I know, but I'm looking at the scope of work that says financial budgeting and planning. So you just voted to advertise for a financial director. So how much financial budgeting and planning? We're either getting a CPA firm or we're hiring a finance director.
By the time you get a finance director, by the time we advertise, interview, get somebody started, it'll be end of May, even. That's very aggressive. I don't even know if we can get somebody in place. And by the end of June, all revisions, everything's going to need to be finalized.
Well, again, our new administrator will be coming and starting, I think we said May or something. Possible she could help with the entries into Tyler. She did say she is.
Well, I'm also going to just point out, has Jackie, did Jackie?
Jackie met with the CPA firm.
Did she provide input or any, because her office is ultimately responsible for budget revisions. And once we set the budget, is ultimately responsible, you know, responsible for payroll.
Yeah.
I guess.
I know that our team, like, they need, they don't have. I know that our team, like, they need, they don't have experience with loading all of this information in.
So it's a lot of money, or the possibility of a lot of money. I, I, again, I, I do think that it's wise to wait and see what our new administrator might be able to.
I guess I don't know that, I don't know if we have enough time to wait, because there are, like, we're going to need, need to make a hard decision about the healthcare. Open enrollment is due to start May 8. Our next meeting is next, is one up. We're going to be gathering all the information. I'm hoping the Millennium Insurance Brokers, they were still waiting for information from Aetna and Health Advantage, but we're going to need to gather all that, and then on May 4th meeting, make some decisions, and I want to be very confident of what the budget is and what may be absorbed for healthcare costs, and we don't have to guess on to our employees, but.
My concern, and they're just like, my concern would be the costs, but with not having a finance director, and you'd said the range is 84 to 96, so let's just say 96, and then obviously we get the benefit from that, too, but that's basically $8,000 a month. So no finance director in April, May, it's not going to be June, so eight, 16, 24, which is a steep.
And you have a county administrator's salary for $3,000, never in March and April, that name.
This is.
That's $30,000 right there.
And, and like you said, it's budget neutral, and I feel it's certainly needed since we, we've struggled getting the budget in this year.
I would like to, again, defer until, I guess, the county administrator gets on, can sit down and talk with Jackie and do a strategy or plan on budget revisions, budgeting going forward, her involvement in potentially hiring the new finance director. I think we're pinning her feet to the fire right now. They gave us a lot of stuff, and we're spending money that we don't know that we need to spend yet.
And, and the way that the budget went, and I know everybody worked really hard, but, you know, I don't, I don't think we have a whole lot of playing around, and I'm just concerned about that.
No, I, I really think we need to get our finances, finances in the Tyler system so that the whole financial system can work, pay things on time, employees are getting their right paycheck and benefits. So I'm going to make the motion that we contract with Cox Holiday for financial audit and statement preparation with a fee ceiling of $24,000.
Second.
And that, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, go ahead. Any discussion?
I, yeah, I did, actually, I want to, I'm going to separate that. This, the financial audit part, this is just our, the budgeting review. The statement preparation, that is something we can look at, that's going to be, Michaela can certainly wait and have her look at that.
Okay.
It's not due till October, and then we can actually, I just found that out today from a state auditor. So you can look at that, and that will come out of next year's.
So you want the financial audit?
Yes, just the financial audit, and we can table it.
I'll amend my motion to only include the contract for the financial audit.
And I'll second it. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye, aye?
Aye.
Post?
No.
Motion carries three, two. All right, approval of hospitality for the Rose Summit?
Okay, I have been working with Cindy and Roger Goodwin and Alex Bowe.
That was pretty good.
Her name, correct name, is that okay? And trying to get the, get the transportation summit organized, and at the moment, so it was yesterday, I put out an email to all the mayors requesting, I think we have a $1,500 bud, not budget, a $1,500 quote for food and drink for that day to serve everybody at the Ranson Civic Center. In order to defray some of the costs, I have put out an email to each of the mayors requesting that they could each put in $250, and that would be the commission with being responsible for $250. I mean, even across the board, I have heard back from the Charlestown mayor and Ranson mayor, and both said they will discuss it and get back to me. I haven't heard from the other three yet, but that is, that is where we are with that. So I think, not quite sure what action we need to take on that right now, just in that I'm waiting and I don't need to give them.
I, I thought, well, the hospitality request is for, the location of the function would be here. Now I'm hearing the Ranson Civic Center.
Yes, ma'am.
And I also thought maybe it might be at DOH headquarters in Jefferson County, so I wouldn't know what's going on here.
I'm sorry, I did send an email to all of the commissioners back in February. I sent it to law enforcement, all the commissioners, legislators, everybody involved. I didn't touch that, I think it was like February 26th.
So you volunteered to organize this?
So I, when I, how I got involved was I went to the first mayor's meeting of the year, which was back in January, and I heard them talking about a transportation summit, and I thought, well, that's, that's a great idea. I don't know quite how I got roped into helping organize, but I'm happy to do it. So Cindy and Roger and Alex and I sat down for a meeting back in March, I think it was, and.
Yes, about two weeks ago.
No, no, the first one.
Oh, the very first one.
Yes, ma'am, the first one. And divvied up some responsibilities, and Roger was doing a lot of different things, like, you know, trying to set a meeting agenda, look up how other areas in our state and local region run air transportation summits. So he's doing certain things like that. Cindy was helping with this type of thing. I spoke to the woman, Kathleen, I can't remember her last name, at the poorhouse at Ranson Civic Center. I think the problem is this room is just too small, and for the amount of people that we, that we wanted to have come. Their, their Department of Highways, people will be coming from the state.
I understand. I've been to Rose Summit, so.
Oh, good, I haven't. I just wanted to share with you what's, what happened.
How much, how much is the rent for the Ranson Civic?
So that's not something that I've heard about. All I know is that Duke Pearson, the Ranson mayor, did say that he has reserved that, has taken.
Okay, well, maybe there's, yeah, I don't, I don't think they are, I'll confirm with Roger.
Yeah, that's probably.
So you, you don't wait till you hear back from the mayors, rather, how much they're going to contribute to money?
Yes, but I wanted to just give an update on where we were with that. I think we're making very good progress, and, you know, just trying to help the county by defraying some of the costs of the whole, you know, grant of the, on, isn't on us.
Thank you for that. We'll put that back on the next, our next agenda, maybe have some information, and we can, we can prove whatever, whatever monies we need for that summit. It's certainly, it's going to be a full day, I believe.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
All right. Is there anything else that needs to come, needs to come before the session tonight? Here or not, if there are no exceptions or adjournments, thank you.